Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here at Liberty High School tonight, as well as those that are watching on TV and online, as we bring you the South Carroll Board of Education Candidate Forum. We also want to thank all four of our candidates for agreeing to participate, as well as Principal Gantz and CCPS for allowing us to use the Liberty High School auditorium. My name is Michelle Rogers, and I am the Liberty High School PTSO president, and I'd like to recognize the committee chair, Scott Walltower, and our timer Heather Mattern, Gareem Aprias, Katie Reed, and Mary Zetner, and all of whom are on the PTSO board, as well as the Carroll Community Media Center for helping to make this happen. Our goal is for the candidates running for the Board of Education to tell us about why they are running and to provide voters a chance to hear their responses to key questions and to help everyone make the most informed decision possible for the future of our schools. Now I'm going to turn it over to Carroll Media Center's managing editor, Bob Bluebaugh, who will be our moderator for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Welcome, everyone. We are at the CMC. Part of our mission is to inform, engage, and connect the many voices and interests of our communities, providing local residents with trusted, unbiased information. At no time is that more important than election season, and we encourage all citizens to participate in the electoral process and to learn all they can about the candidates. We're pleased to have all four candidates running for seats in the nonpartisan Carroll County Board of Education race tonight, and they are Miri Lynn Dupin, Dr. Amanda Jaskowski, Dr. Greg Malvoe, and Kristin Zimmer. Two of them will be voted onto the board on November 5th. Each candidate tonight will have two minutes for an opening statement. That will be followed by a Q&amp;A session, in which they'll get 90 seconds to respond to each question. There will be no debate or time for rebuttal. Everyone will answer the same questions. And after the Q&amp;A, each candidate will have another two minutes for a closing statement. All responses will be timed, and the timekeeper will give candidates a signal when 30 seconds remain. And when time has elapsed, an alarm will sound, and they will know it. Everybody gets the same amount of time and keeps it fair for everybody. So if everybody's ready, let's get started. And each candidate may now present a two-minute opening statement. We'll start with Mrs. Dupin.
Good evening. Thank you very much to the organizers of tonight's forum, the Liberty High School PTSO, and to the high school itself and Carroll County Public Schools for providing the space. I know we are all also very grateful to the Community Media Center for their services, the public for submitting questions and seeking to make informed voting decisions, and for our moderator, Mr. Bob Bluebaugh. My name is Miri Lynn Dupin. As you make your assessment of the candidates, I hope you will conclude that I am uniquely qualified to serve and lead on the Carroll County Board of Education. For over 10 years, I have been a passionate advocate for our local school system, fighting for the resources and support our educators need, and our students especially, need. Last year, I was incredibly honored to receive the Friend of Education Award from the Carroll County Education Association. Their endorsement in this election, along with the Carroll Association of School Employees, means that the people who know most what students need to succeed believe that I am one of the right choices. My own kids are grown now, but they attended CCPS from kindergarten through their 12th grade graduations. Having parented two siblings at every grade level, I know what learning looks like at every stage, plus have a deep knowledge of the school system, its policies, and personnel. My upbringing in a military family also means I experienced a wide range of learning environments and cultivated the ability to get along with people from all walks of life. Professionally, after earning a Bachelor of Science degree in biology, I traveled two related paths that ultimately merged. First, I was an environmental educator, helping kids of all ages learn about the natural world through encounters with live animals, both in a farm setting and at schools. Then I transitioned to nonprofit marketing and membership management, and am currently the Corporate Relations Officer at the National Aquarium. All of this confers many applicable skills and qualities that I hope you will see demonstrated this evening. I am excited about the opportunity to share my thoughts about the important issues.
Well, thank you to the Liberty High PTSO and the Community Media Center for hosting this event. I'm also grateful for the opportunity to connect with our community and to discuss the future of education in Carroll County. I'm Dr. Amanda Jaskowski, and I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe in the power of public schools to change lives and uplift the entire community. As an occupational therapy professor, I've spent my career working with children, youth, and their families, advocating for evidence-based practices that meet every child's unique needs. My husband and I are both deeply involved in our local schools, volunteering and supporting initiatives that bring families and educators together. I'm concerned about the directions of our schools currently, and I believe I have a unique combination of experience and expertise to serve on the board. I'm also proud, along with Mrs. Dupin, to have earned the endorsement of the Carroll County Education Association and the Carroll County Association of School Employees, who trust me to advocate for our educators and staff, because strong public school systems start with supporting the people who work in them every day. With three children of my own in our schools, I'm committed to ensuring that every student, whether they plan to attend college, pursue a trade, or follow another path, has access to the resources and support that they need to succeed. I'm interested in returning our focus to preparing students for community life outside the classroom, lifting educator morale, and growing a school environment where every student feels safe, valued, and able to thrive. I think that the reason you should or shouldn't vote for someone should not be because of party affiliation. I think it should be about experience, and expertise, and ideas. And even if you feel that a candidate's ideas don't perfectly match your own, I think you should think about whether or not you trust that person to be a reasonable representation of your community and be an effective leader, and not beholden to a particular group or party.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe?
Good evening. First off, thank you to the Media Center and Liberty High School for hosting the forum. I also want to thank those who are here, who are interested and with us to listen. I appreciate that. Hello, I'm Dr. Greg Malvoe, and I am a lifelong resident of Maryland, and I've been an educator for over 25 years. I hold a PhD in education and administration, and in various capacities, I've taught grades K through 12, as well as at the college level. I come with much expertise. I am a proud parent of a Carroll County middle school student. Being the parent of a child with special needs, I am well-informed about the use of IEPs and resources for students with learning disabilities. I'm an administrator as well. Cause-wide coordinator of Study Abroad, serving an institution of over 60,000 students, I have experienced managing budgets and writing grants. I enjoy actively volunteering in our community, and I'm a member of the PTO of my son's school and a volunteer for his Boy Scout troop, among other things. If elected, I plan to keep our schools number one in the state with academics, safety, and giving our students success in a trade, college, or entering the workforce right out of high school. There needs to be clear focus on traditional curriculum, math, reading, writing, as well as civics and American history. I will support a learning environment that makes students independent thinkers. Students will not be told what to think, but rather be taught how to think. The local values of Carroll County and their residents must be respected. Therefore, I support giving the parents the opportunity to opt their kids out of lessons with controversial topics. Students excel most when parents are actively involved in their school activities. Therefore, I believe students and parents should be consulted when academic, social, and medical decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Zimmer.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Zimmer. I'd like to start by thanking Liberty High School PTSO and the Community Media Center. Thank you, Bob, for moderating this evening. For those of you who don't know me, first and foremost, I'm the mom of two children who both attend Carroll County Public Schools. I'm a lifelong, fifth-generation Carroll County resident. I grew up in downtown Westminster. I'm a certified senior advisor, and I own a thriving small business. I have over 15 years of business practice and ownership skills that have given me an understanding how to set and manage budgets, how to meeting financial and regulatory obligations, managing strategic goals, and probably most importantly, making tough decisions regarding the allocation of resources. I'm a very proud community member and serve on many different local boards. I'm currently the president of the Board of the Senior Provider Information Network, as well as I serve on committees for Bridging Life's Tastes of Carroll and the Partnership for a Healthier Carroll. In recent years, I sat on the Executive Board for Habitat for Humanity of Carroll County, as well as sat on the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau's Philanthropy Committee. In the last three years since my oldest has started kindergarten, I've been very active in my children's school, Cranberry Station, where I currently serve as the president of the PTA, and also within Carroll County Public School System in general, where I currently serve on the Curriculum Council. While helping at my children's school, I've had the opportunity to have an up-close and personal perspective of the tremendous accomplishments and challenges of our students and dedicated educators. I believe that strong and wise leadership, coupled with a commitment for building partnerships and respecting traditional community values, we can effectively address the challenges while encouraging and rewarding the accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's get to the Q&amp;A portion of tonight. Among the questions I'll be asking, most of them actually were turned in by citizens, voters, people that are interested in this election, so you'll get hopefully a nice mix of questions from everybody in the county. They were sent to us ahead of time, obviously, and we're going to get to as many as possible as we possibly can tonight. We'll rotate among everyone at the table, so we're going to start with Dr. Jaskowski for the first question. Okay? So let's start with the most fundamental question of all. What do you consider to be your strengths as a candidate that will translate to success as a board member?
Sure. Well, thank you for the question. So I'm an educator myself. I'm the daughter of two lifelong educators, and so the value of public education has been deeply ingrained in me, and as well as, I think, an understanding of the complexities of the job. It's, you know, part communication, part imparting information, helping connect ideas so that students really understand them and can access them. You know, it's also caring for children for many, many hours a day, often more hours than parents unfortunately see their children. So there's all sorts of things that go into the experience of education, classroom management, et cetera. And so I think I bring that perspective, not only as an educator myself, but as a pediatric occupational therapist, whose life work has been around helping kids access their learning and participate in their communities. In addition to that, I'm a mom of three, so I am deep in the trenches, along with many other parents, in raising my own children, helping navigate, you know, all of the forms that come home from the school system, and understanding the different pieces of the curriculum, and thinking about how that relates to my own family values, so helping kind of extend the lessons that they learn in the classroom, along with what we believe as a family. In addition to that, I'm a program director in my role at Towson University, and so I have a lot of leadership in that.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe?
Experience that I bring, I think what I currently do in my life now brings a lot of experience to the Board of Ed as well. I left here again, or I left prior to coming here, and I was teaching my writing class and students, and I typically have to go home and I have a lot of papers to grade. I'm trying not to let that be on my mind as I do the form. I want my mind completely here, but just being an instructor day to day and doing this every day really keeps my mind and tools and things in terms of curriculum and delivery strong and effective and ready to go, and I will bring that to the board. Also, I'm an administrator, as I said, 60,000 students, and so I run our Study Abroad International Education Program. It's a very diverse institution, we're the second most diverse institution in all of the country as a community college. We have dual enrollment, so I work closely with 9th through 12th graders. I understand what they're coming in with. I'm a little concerned sometimes in terms of preparedness for college, and I think I can help in terms of making that link or that bridge between where students are and where they need to be in terms of success in college for getting that trade, for getting that job out of school. As I said before, I've taught K through 8 as a substitute teacher. I bring that as well, and I just want to bring people together on the board.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
Thank you for the question. I think that my business experience really sets me apart while I'm running for this office. Seven years ago, I left a job in marketing and management, as in the corporate world, to open my own small business. I completely understand what it means to have to run a lean and mean financially tight budget, watching every penny, and like I said in my opening statement, making really tough decisions regarding the allocation of resources. Carroll County is known for doing a lot with a little, so I feel like I will be able to step up to the plate for that as well. I am deeply ingrained in our community, both through my service as well as in the business community. I think that I will be able to leverage those relationships, leverage with business owners in our community, to help pull them in, to see how we can support the schools as more. Finally, as the PTA president at Cranberry Station Elementary, I am in the schools all the time. I'm in there regularly, and I'm seeing what's working, what's not working. Like I said, the tremendous accomplishments, as well as things that certainly need some work. The schools do not look the same way they did when we went to school. So that is why I think I'm uniquely qualified for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Dupin?
Thank you so much. So electing somebody to a position is like saying, what is a job that you're hiring somebody to do? Do they understand what that job entails? Do they have the demonstrated skills and abilities to do it, a demonstrated actual interest and passion for that? So I shared earlier in the beginning that I have that parent perspective, both breadth and depth. I understand this job. I've been advocating for our schools for over 10 years. I've been to so many board meetings. I have reviewed policies. I have chimed in on policies and shared my perspective. So I definitely know what I'm getting into. I actually know what the job does and doesn't do. I have that long familiarity and demonstrated interest, like I said. I've been to every single school, and I mentioned also at the beginning that my career in the nonprofit world has a lot of traits and abilities that confer, and I want to list out what some of those are now. Staff supervision, budgeting, strategic planning, committee and board relations, a dedication to mission-driven service, navigating the unexpected, collaborative problem solving, and then creativity, enthusiasm, tenacity, optimism. When you work in the nonprofit space, you often feel like there's always more to do than the resources available, and if that doesn't describe public education and what happens in our schools and classrooms, I'm not quite sure I know what does describe it. So I definitely think that all of that together are how you know that I can do this.
Thank you. I know you've been talking to students, all of you. So what do you believe are the three biggest problems facing Carroll County schools right now, from a student perspective? And we'll start with Dr. Malvoe.
I talk to students a good deal in this run for the Board of Ed. I think that's so essential to get their voice. So students are concerned about discipline, and they want discipline, and they want to be in a classroom environment where they feel it's the best for student excellence and learning, and they don't want to feel bullied. They don't want to feel that one student kind of takes over the classroom atmosphere and the 24 others suffer. So they want discipline, and they're hungry for that. Students also want to use the class time effectively. Sometimes they feel there's additional class time where they don't really get to the academic side with the math, with the writing, and the reading. Maybe too much time spent in terms of consulting and discussions and so forth, and they really want to get to the meat of the matter with that. Let's see, a third, they just want to be heard. Their voices want to be heard and respected, and I just need to continue to listen to them, and I will do so, along with their parents. And I believe that is part of the third, is that they want their parents to be involved in their education, and they know that their parents, when involved, will allow them to excel. And so we need parental support, and they want their parents there, volunteering, helping in whatever way possible.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
I think the three biggest challenges that students are feeling right now, definitely the bullying. It comes up time and time again, and it feels, my understanding is that it feels to students as if nothing is being done about it, and that the bullies are able to continue to come back to school and torment their victims essentially, time and time again. I think social media is a big part of that problem, and I'm cautiously optimistic that having the phones out of the schools will certainly help with that problem. I also think that adults modeling better behavior on social media would help that problem as well. I think a second one would be mental health. And I come from a family of mental health professionals. I am in support of having more mental health supports within the schools. The caveat to that is that there's parent participation, so that parents are aware, that they give their explicit permission for their student to be seen, as well as involved in that process. And then finally, I agree to that student voice is a third challenge that I do think that students feel, and to that effect, I'm in favor of creating a student advisory council to have representatives from all the schools to be able to communicate their concerns, ideas, and give direct feedback to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupin?
Thank you. So I would say that the first issue, and again, keep in mind that it depends on the age and developmental level of the child, and student, what their particular perspectives and concerns are. So I'll be speaking somewhat globally for all of them, but it kind of depends. But safety, of course, is number one. Students want to be safe. They don't want to be bullied. And especially in today's world, and especially as kids get older and become more aware, many of them are frankly very concerned about gun violence. They are concerned about something terrible and tragic happening at their schools, and knowing that that's going to be protected. So that's one. And the kids, even when they don't have the language for it yet, like they know there's a mental health crisis. They know that depression and anxiety and these other things are starting to become so much more prevalent at earlier and earlier ages, and as was referenced, that devices are the issue, although kids won't tell you that devices are the issue. But we, as their parents and educators and everything, understand that that has an awful lot to do with it. I also think the divisiveness in our world right now really affects our kids. They want schools to be a happy place. They want it to be fun and engaging, and they want it, we want for them, of course, that it's a place of common ground, where everybody can come to with common values, and we kind of leave our differences at the door. And that affects them. That impacts them. That makes it harder for them to have what they need to be ready to learn. And I just want to mention the interesting and fun thing, because that's the way the best schools are also, and kids just want that very basically.
Thank you. And Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes, so I would agree that the primary concern would be safety. And so this includes physical safety and mental health, of course. So, you know, school should be an environment of learning, which means that there is the ability to have focused attention on the lesson, but it also needs to be an environment of belonging. So students need to feel a connection with others. They need to feel acceptance of their ideas and values, and they need to have protection from harm, and that comes in many different forms. So I think, you know, Ms. Dupin spoke to a number of those issues. I'm going to try to get to my other two as well. One of the ones that I'm seeing a lot also at the undergraduate and graduate level is that students really want some guidance on how best to navigate the pressures of social media, use of all these different new technologies, how to evaluate information effectively for rigor and accuracy, and just navigating the onslaught of information that they're exposed to every day, so that they can make good decisions. And then finally, I think students want to feel prepared for the next step. So upon graduation, they want to feel confident that they're going to be competitive at desirable institutions of higher learning and the job market, and that involves making sure that we prepare them effectively by teaching them accurate history, raising their reading and math performance, and connecting what they're learning in the classroom to the outside world.
Thank you. All right, let's get into the book reconsideration policy. It's been a big topic over the past year or so. So each of you, do you have a good, do you feel you have a good understanding of the policy, and what are your thoughts on the process and the way it's played out? And we'll start this time with Ms. Zimmer.
Thank you. I would start by saying that I fully support students' ability to access books and other supplemental materials that represent multiple and varied viewpoints, as well as their right to be taught academic subjects from varying perspectives. And I am very supportive of a reconsideration committee that is well-rounded and well-represented by teachers, students, parents, and the like. It has been a very controversial last year about the books and what has been deemed acceptable and what has not. I have always said since day one that I agree with the Carroll County Education Association in that I do not condone books that are sexually gratuitous in nature, but I also appreciate that I am not necessarily the person that should be the arbiter of what is considered sexually gratuitous in nature, and that's where we do look to that reconsideration To that end, I think that when a book is in question, I am fully supportive of having a parent permission slip on that book, because like I said, I don't necessarily think that the board should be determining which books are appropriate or not. So I think we should go back to the default of parent permission slips on books like that, and just to make note that I'm fully supportive of all the classic books. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupin?
Yes, I do feel that I'm very familiar with the various policies and practices and have a good grasp of what happened. The book reconsideration process, I think, as it is intended to take place, and there have been some modifications which were dictated by some legislation at the state to this effect, that not just any citizen can make an objection. Now you have to be a parent, an educator, or a student. And ideally, you just, maybe you come across something you find objectionable, and so you file for some reconsideration on that. But that's not what happened. I mean, an outside group, you know, that's part of a national group with an agenda, submitted over 60 challenges, bombarded the system such that it didn't even get to take place and unfold the way it's supposed to be, because the superintendent pulled all the books while they were being reviewed. Over 20 now have been banned from our school system. Practices have been put in place that are completely impracticable for our media specialists. Educators have been called terrible names over the whole process. Like what happened should not have happened, and we needed to have a board that backed up their employees. And the other thing that's a real shame about it is that several people said, "I'm fine with some tighter controls, but don't get rid of books altogether and take away every single parent and family's choice," when maybe not every parent would have chosen the same way. So it's, if you can't tell, I'm pretty passionate about this. This is really important, because it is an assault on the freedom to read and freedom to learn.
Thank you. Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes, I too feel that I have a pretty deep knowledge of the reconsideration process and the policies related to that. I know that we do have some information about the different roles or types of folks that serve on that committee, but we don't actually have information on the specific individuals or the makeup. And the process that the committee uses is still a bit of a black box. So we know about how one would apply for reconsideration, but then kind of the timeline and expectations of committee members from there is not as clear, and that would be something that I would be wanting to get some more information about. I am on record repeatedly saying that I have always supported the right for parents and educators and students to question the appropriateness of educational materials and books in the library. Mistakes do happen. I also think that public opinion changes and shifts on certain topics, and so sometimes they become less appealing or appropriate over time. But again, as Mrs. Dupin was describing, overwhelming the system in the way that it has been in the last several years to effectively kind of shut down the process from working in the way that it's intended is not the way to go. And in addition, the evaluation form that our media specialists are asked to complete at this time really puts them at risk and really kind of flies in the face of- puts them at risk and really kind of flies in the face of this narrative that we respect our professionals and that, you know, they really weren't even consulted on that process.
Thank you. Dr. Malvo?
A little concerned that with the book reconstruction policy that talks have become contentious and we have to really try to, you know, respect each other. And I fear that there's been labels being thrown at individuals as we try to have respectful dialogue. Book banners and that sort of thing doesn't help in terms of trying to work things out to make sure that we just protect our kids from sexually graphic works. And I take this personally. I'm an instructor of literature and it's been that case for over 20 years. I've introduced many books to hundreds of students of all ages. Shared books written by authors of different races, ethnicities, sexual orientation, whether that's County Cullen, Alice Walker, James Baldwin, and more, just to name a few. Some issues that I've introduced in class are challenging to students, particularly for my African-American literature students and yes, women's literature, which I've taught. And I allow discussion and thought to come from students who've considered multiple sources and perspectives. As they do this, they get their own critical research and thinking. My semester ends the same way it always begins, students not knowing my political and social beliefs. Having shared literature with children in grades K through eight and as a professor now, I fully understand that certain works at the college level I would not share at the elementary and middle school level. And this is common sense. If on the board, I'd encourage consensus building and constructive dialogue at the schools, shielding our students from overly sexually explicit material at a young age. And it's a common sense approach that I think we all can agree on. Let's allow students to maintain that innocence. Schools are not a place to violate this. Let the families do what they need to do and the time they feel is best to introduce these subjects.
Okay, so, next topic. Some of you have talked about this a little bit during your opening statements, but what local organizations do you belong to or support? And what sort of influence do you think they might have on you should you earn a seat on the board? And we'll start with Mrs. Dupin.
Thank you so much. Local organizations that I belong to or support. So, my life is very full of my career, for one. But I have been involved, like I said, I've just been an independent advocate. I volunteered for a group called Carroll Values Education for many years. Very happy to have been involved with them. I myself co-founded and co-led a group called Vocal Carroll County that was active between 2017 and 2021. And everything we did was focused on, again, coming together on our common ground around common values to try to encourage more civic engagement, to try to encourage good governance by our local officials, and to really promote non-partisanship in the right settings as a common value. I have also been involved in the Carroll County Democratic Party. I was on that committee for about a year, but I stepped away to run for Board of Education again. I was involved there. A lot of that had to do with trying to make sure that all voices in our community are heard and to try to encourage people to be able to be more themselves and embrace their various values and have better dialogue and, you know, interaction and things along those lines. So, I would say that as far as organizations go at present, those are the key ones. I was obviously involved in PTAs and other school-based activities when my kids were growing up as well.
Thank you. Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes, so, I guess I'll start small and then get bigger, excuse me. So, in my own homeschool where my children attend, I serve as the Chair of the Advocacy Committee and also as part of the C-3PO Parent Council of Organizations in that role. I am also the Chair of the Employee Appreciation Efforts that happen every year within our school and that's a lot of fun and a lot of work. I have been appointed by the Board of Education at CCPS to the Curriculum Council for my elementary school and I also serve on the Family Life Advisory Council. And so, in those roles, I help evaluate materials and discuss how those may be implemented in the classroom from a parent perspective. So, with all four of those roles, I've learned a lot about what the day-to-day activities of our educators are, what the classrooms look like, what the state of the physical condition of the schools are, and then what the wide range of perspectives are among parents and community members in relation to the schools. I do a lot of volunteering with Scouting America, formerly called Scouts, BSA, or Boy Scouts. And I have served on the Boards of Action for Kindness as well as Camping Unlimited, which is an organization that helps expand access to outdoor participation for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So, a lot of connections there in relation to experiential learning and supports for special education students. And then finally, I'm an active advocate at the state and federal levels, both for public education as well as for my professional organizations.
Thank you. Dr. Malvo?
I really enjoy my work with the parent-teacher organization at my son's school. I'm the gentleman who has the restaurant nights and I talk to the different local groups and say, "Okay, can we come to your restaurant and can we get a percentage of the proceeds and all?" And I really enjoy that. And plus, I get to reach out to the community in doing so and meeting a lot of interesting people. Also, I really enjoy working with the Corollary Soccer League for North Carroll Soccer with some of the kids and they're special needs children. It's their league. And just seeing them get out there and do their best and I love that. So, I kind of co-coach with that. The local Boy Scouts troop I have where we live, I'm active in that as well. And even at my college, there's a lot of volunteering that I do. Safety is so important to me in terms of students who are going overseas. So, I'm the head of a couple boards in terms of school safety. Organizations, I want to bring them actually, not just these, but organizations in our local community. I want to bring them together with us to make our schools stronger. So, for example, I want to work with local businesses to create internship opportunities. Maybe some car dealerships can work with our schools. Local trade unions as well, plumbers, construction workers, to implement that with our schools as well for our students' benefit. Working with local tutoring businesses, extended learning opportunities at school and after-school for homework. And encouraging nonprofit organizations to come visit our schools as well to discuss things like bullying and youth mental concerns and so forth. So, a number of different ways.
And Ms. Zimmer?
I mentioned a handful of them in my introduction, that I'm the President of the PTA and sit on the Curriculum Council for Carroll County Public Schools, that I'm the President of the Senior Provider Information Network, as well as sit on committees for Taste of Carroll, Partnership for a Healthier Carroll. I'm very active in my church. My husband and I co-lead a life group and I am the chairperson for our nomination committee there. I'm involved in many business organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce of Carroll County, South Carroll Business Association. I frequent many business groups, including the Ag Business Breakfast, which is monthly, the Tawny Town Business Breakfast, which is now held quarterly, Carroll Business Network up here in Sykesville, which is held monthly. As far as political groups, the only group that I am a member of, only organization, is the Carroll County Republican Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, we're really pleased to be holding this here at Liberty High School in Eldersburg. And so, let's have a couple questions that deal with schools in this area of the county. How do you plan on handling the overcapacity schools in the southern end of the county? And should redistricting be on the table? And we'll start with Dr. Jaskowski.
Sure. So, as the parent of children who attend the most overcrowded school in the entire district, this is, very much hits home. So, it's absolutely a problem. I think part of it is that there has not been a lot of long-term planning and kind of mapping out what those numbers look like over time and how that articulates with some of the work that our commissioners are doing in relation to development plans and so forth. I think a lot of times because we've been on such a bare-bones budget, that we are kind of putting Band-Aids on things as they happen. A good example of this is the recently approved addition to Freedom Elementary School, which even once it's constructed in several years, will not quite get us to the correct capacity level. And certainly, that will be surpassed pretty much immediately. So, you know, I think we need some longer-range thinking and planning and I do think we need to consider additional building beyond just slapping on portables and small-scale additions, especially when a lot of these schools have very small footprints. I also think that redistricting is something that we need to think carefully about. I know that the way that it's been handled in the past has been pretty distasteful and uncomfortable for a lot of folks. It doesn't mean that it has to be the entire countywide, but it's always a domino effect, of course. And so, taking a look closely at that, but also communicating with the community about the fact that most school districts do look at redistricting from time to time as neighborhoods change and grow and dynamics shift. And so, that's something that would not be off the table, but I would want to be very thoughtful about it and take into consideration what the community has to say.
Thank you. Dr. Malvo?
So, with overcrowding in schools, this can have a real major effect on other things. So, when the school gets crowded, obviously, we can have the issue of teachers not having manageable classroom sizes. And then, the education can suffer as well of the students. So, we want to make sure that they do have those manageable classrooms that can, you know, continue in those sizes. We don't want the curriculum and for things to suffer in terms of educational delivery. In terms of redistricting, I would be careful and cautious with that as well. Sometimes splitting up friends and family and people who've been at, you know, a community for a while or went to that middle school and suddenly they're redistricted and they don't see their friends at the high school they expected can be devastating to a student, to a family, and really change their trajectory. So, it's a concern in terms of overcrowding. And we just have to make sure that we also look at our budget and we're spending properly and that, you know, we can find resources and maybe support in that school where there's a little bit more overcrowdedness. Maybe we need more ESPs to help deal with the classrooms and so forth and SSAs and others.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
I too find overcrowding in schools to be problematic. I went to Westminster High School before Winters Mill opened. I was actually the first, the last class that was not split in half. So, when I was a junior, half of the sophomore and freshman class split. But in my freshman and sophomore year, when Westminster High School was so overcrowded, we had students sitting on the floor and behind teachers' desks. The portables were completely overcrowded. So, I experienced that and how that affected my ability to learn. Redistricting is something that no one wants to talk about and it's very uncomfortable and I absolutely appreciate that. It causes anxiety. It could potentially divide the community, but sometimes it is unavoidable. To minimize disruption and tension when school boundaries need to be redrawn, I think the process needs to be inclusive, transparent, and data-driven. Inclusive, where everyone has a seat at the table, parents, teachers, students, and community members. Everyone needs to feel heard. A transparent process with high levels of communication and public access to hearings that defends against feelings of suspicion. And then finally, I think it needs to be a data-driven process where decisions are transparently guided through factors such as population trends, attendance numbers, and traditional community boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupin?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a really difficult subject because everybody obviously forms attachments to schools and redistricting means changing from that. But typically, in a perfect world, schools are redistricted on a regular, although infrequent, interval. And this helps ensure optimal learning opportunities so that you don't necessarily have subjects that can be taught in one school that has plenty of students. And then, you don't have enough students to fill a classroom in a more rural, you know, more sparsely populated area. And so, where, in places like here, you know, it's hard to do that. That becomes an issue. It also helps with operational efficiency, you know, again, trying to be smart with your dollars and being as efficient as possible. And then, of course, protecting against overcrowding and all of the things that have been mentioned that are problematic with that. It's very difficult in a place like this where there, the population is less dense. A lot of the, everybody is spread out sort of all across this geographic area. And trying to balance enrollments across the school system is going to always be met with fierce opposition because it's going to mean not only uprooting, but then long bus rides, two-long bus rides, quite frankly. And then, often, school officials don't have the political will to do this or they have personal ties to communities or schools and that makes it that much more difficult. So, this is one of those areas that it's like a really tough decision. I read a piece by a political scientist named Duniel Dzakupda in Maryland Matters some years ago, and he suggested that any school that's going to do this should get an independent commission whose findings are binding, but they're implemented on a time lag so that they're predictable and you know what to expect and when.
Thank you. Okay, generally, what are your thoughts on Blueprint? And specifically, how will you handle the Blueprint mandated teacher transfer from one part of the county to the other that's likely to create even larger class sizes in the southern end of Carroll? And this time, we'll start with Dr. Malvo.
All right, so Blueprint, plus and minuses for sure with it and its impacts. So, well, first off, I'm going to ensure that we work to prioritize Blueprint requirements with available funding. I feel like a strong relationship with legislators to secure necessary funds for our teachers and students is good. I'll be a solid advocate for adding mental health professionals. I'll push for the development of adequate pre-kindergarten facilities to meet the needs of families. Also concerning Blueprint, well, I think we have to be careful in terms of certain parts like the 60-40 split, 60 being teaching 40% non-instructional duties. We want to make sure that time is, well, we have to replace that instruction that's lost, you know, and that can be a cost. So, that's something with Blueprint that could be better. I think Blueprint, as I said, again, bringing in pre-K facilities and so forth can be very helpful. Also, in terms of, you know, our special ed, again, instructors, counselors, and so forth are so inundated with paperwork and things that they have to do and they need help. And so, I'm hoping that with Blueprint somehow that will also bring in some more people to assist with those needs.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
I think that Blueprint does have pros and cons, but overall, my feelings about Blueprint is, are that it's going to be an extremely difficult lift and that the state has put Carroll County in an impossible financial situation. It is underfunded and inflexible legislation. That being said, there are certainly pros, right? Because there's pros to everything. Some of those pros, higher standards for teachers with merit-based career ladder. I am extremely supportive of the fact that the teachers got their, where the starting salary bumped to $60,000 before it was required, although it's out there that I did not support that. I was supportive of that. I'm supportive of the dual enrollment and credits at Carroll Community College, as well as the partnership with the workforce development to have career counselors starting in the sixth grade. That being said, I have an issue with the inflexible weighted funding formulas, excuse me, the inflexible pay structures, and the threats of the state of Maryland withholding our funding. The second part of your question was that if teachers did have to get moved because of the funding, I think it's only going to exasperate a problem that we already have. So, again, we would have to likely look at redistricting and I would address it the way I did in the previous question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupin?
Thank you. Yes, so again, the Blueprint's aims are ambitious and admirable and they're also evidence-based, but they're underfunded. And so, it's very large and unwieldy and kind of a moving target that thankfully is becoming more flexible, although I think it's going to take a lot of joint advocacy work among the different school systems to really articulate what is needed for a more seamless transition. It's obviously a hot topic down here because the 75-25 mandate, which has to do with how much funding is in school with the students that most need it. And in order to do that, then teachers potentially have to get moved around. And then, of course, then you have the threat of more overcrowding as well. But I want to be clear that the Blueprint doesn't say that that's how you have to resolve the issue to move everything around. Carroll County ended up in a very difficult situation because our schools have been underfunded for over 10 years. And that has caused the elimination of over 300 positions. If we were not basically last in the state with like non-teaching positions, we'd have a lot more flexibility for how we're going to meet needs and try to address and move resources around. So, that there is one of the issues. I agree, though, that the funding constraints are too strict and I would be happy to work with our state legislatures and our state Board of Education to try to come up with more flexibility around exactly how that works and try to make sure that the state is putting forth enough money to help truly support that and not just put the burden on all of the local county-based organizations.
Thank you. And Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes, so let me be really clear. The way that the question was constructed is I
The way that the question was constructed is, I think, a bit erroneous. So there are no mandated teacher transfers in the Blueprint. What the Blueprint says is that a certain proportion of the funding has to follow the child to whom it's attached. And what that means, in the case of Carroll County, is just as Mrs. Dupin was describing, we find ourselves in this situation because we have historically underfunded our public schools in Carroll County. And so now, those funds that can be attached to the child, or in other words, resources, those are bodies. And so the only resources that we can kind of move with children are people. And that's not the intention of the Blueprint. The intention is that those are resources to support student learning. It may mean teachers. It may mean curricular materials. It may mean expanded facilities. I think that, you know, any massive piece of legislation, particularly any sort of education reform, is going to be extremely complex. It is, again, going to be something that is kind of constantly refined and adjusted as we see how things play out, and I think that that's absolutely appropriate. I do support the intentions behind much of the Blueprint as far as making sure that we are providing resources to the students that need it most and being as equitable as possible. But I think that we do, I would want to continue to advocate for more flexibility and transparency, making sure that there's as much local input as possible into how that's implemented in Carroll County.
Thank you. Okay, up next. How would each of you ensure, or work to ensure, that our schools are providing an appropriate education for every student? And this time, we'll start with Ms. Zimmer.
I believe that every student should, every student should be receiving this equal scholastic opportunities. That does not always mean equal outcomes. And I know that that's not necessarily a popular opinion sometimes, but I do believe that our teachers should be focusing on teaching our students reading, writing, math, science, and the arts. And that education, traditional education rather, should be paramount for all of our students. That being said, I do feel that our students who fall under the free and reduced meals, our students who are English second language learners, as well as our special education students, do need extra supports. And I'm absolutely supportive of that. In a perfect world, Carroll County would be able to determine what those extra supports looked like. Unfortunately, Blueprint has, again, sort of taken the reins and is forcing that issue a little bit, but I am supportive all in all. My only gripe is that I feel that Carroll County should be making the decisions of what that looks like exactly. But I feel that by providing extra supports for those students, we will be able to give every student what they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupin?
Thank you very much. So Dr. Jaskowski and I are basically running on a ticket together. We formed a joint campaign entity called The Slate for Student Success, and we have several platform priorities. And one of those is to ensure an equitable access to resources and focus on academics. It's very much this exact subject. And it's multi-layered and complex and there are a lot of pieces to it. Obviously, students need to have individualized interventions, individualized instructional plans. We need more rigor in the classroom to ensure that, that people can maximize their abilities and their learning. But one of the things that I am personally a huge champion of is that in addition to the student voice, I very much support the idea of having the student voice be more predominant, we need to listen to our educators more. We need to develop them and support them and empower them and be great employers of them and listen to them about what's needed because they are the ones who know. And I think that sometimes we get a little lost in bureaucracy. We get a little lost in all of the various different stakeholder groups and special interest groups and everything else. And we need to get back around to the classroom educators and then the school-based administrators too, who really know what's happening at their school, and getting all of that input to say, what are these gaps? Who are we underserving? What do we need to do to do better? And then map that out and work together and work collaboratively. And it really does take the entire team across the organization to make that happen.
Thank you. Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes, so the Blueprint and other education reform efforts were put in place to make sure that, that educational equity that Mrs. Dupin was describing is actually happening. And what we know is that right now, that's not the case in Carroll County. So we know from looking at the outcomes and performance of our farm students, of our multilingual learners, of our students with disabilities, that they are not achieving and succeeding at the way that we would expect and a far cry from other students. This is also the case for gifted and talented students or advanced academic students that need additional supports to help support their learning. So, you know, I think that taking that whole child approach as we described to support these students, not just in their academic needs, but also in emotional and social components and sometimes physical supports as necessary. I think that this involves looking at best practices, being evidence-based. But again, as Mrs. Dupin was describing, you know, making sure that all these kind of shiny new ideas are actually feasible to implement and that involves incorporating the educator perspective. So helping them give us some feedback that we're not just piling new things on to an already overloaded plate and what that would actually look like in practice in our county and in relation to our strategic plan and values.
Thank you. And Dr. Malvoe?
My vision for an appropriate education for every student means that students should provide age-appropriate educational materials that examine subjects from, again, a variety of perspectives, research methods, so that our students are taught, again, how to think and not be told what to think. Again, as an educator of 25 years, the golden rule that's filed is that, and with the majority of my colleagues, is that it's not to bring your own political and social views into the classroom. I think that's very important for every student. Again, parents should have the right to remove their children from curriculum that they feel is inappropriate and that precious time be spent giving all children the academics and skills needed for a successful future. And that comes with traditional classes and curriculum with math, writing, science, American history, and reading. Students need to have that foundation so they can have a promising future in trade or college or workforce. Also, I'm interested in what the super, or the state superintendent Carrie Wright has said in terms of the science of reading. Some of that's quite interesting to me with that emphasis on the importance of phonological awareness, phonics, fluency vocabulary, and comprehension in developing strong reading skills, and also figuring out which students are struggling so we can do screening and evidence-based supplemental reading instruction to support struggling readers and improve their outcomes.
Thank you. Next topic. Do you think DEI should be integrated into our school system? And if so, how? And we're back around to Mrs. Dupin to start.
Thank you so much. So this is, DEI is one of those initialisms that gets thrown around with a lot of, again, political weight, divisive agendas around it. But you break it up in terms of what it means. I think that there are components of this that have to be incorporated into our school systems in order to make sure that every student is receiving the individualized resources and attention that they need. Diversity is a good thing. We, there's, there's a state mandate and Carroll County has it in the strategic plan to try to have a more diverse workforce. Kids, if kids can't see it, they can't be it. And so representation does in fact matter. Of course, you want the most highly qualified, but the data shows that not only do students from various minority backgrounds do better when they can see themselves in their educators, so do all of the other students as well. Equity just means taking a look at any student and how they come to school, knowing that there may be additional supports that they need and making sure that they get them. And that runs the gamut, you know, special education supports, farm students, you know, there's several of these different things. And then inclusion just means that everybody feels welcome. Every student deserves to grow up to follow their dreams, to belong, to feel as though they're not being othered or shunted aside for the people that are in the quote-unquote "majority." These are not bad things. They do need to be incorporated and doing it is a complex process and you want to make sure that, again, it doesn't become itself divisive either.
Thank you. Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes, I fully support our school system's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'm just not certain that we're right now kind of measuring up to what our policies and standards are. You know, I think that this starts from the top. So making sure that our leadership in our school system and our board members are adhering to nondiscrimination policies, that they are behaving and speaking in ways that ensure that every student and every family is made to feel welcome and supported and not othered. So in addition to adhering to the law, I think that, you know, I spoke at the top of the night about what safety meant to me and that safety means creating an environment of learning and an environment of belonging. And so again, making sure that students are made to feel welcome in their classrooms, that educators are made to feel that they are supported and valued and that their teaching methods are not constantly questioned. So, you know, this idea of equity as somehow meaning that it lowers standards is really flawed. And, you know, I do believe in the concept of a rising tide lifts all boats, that if we support everyone in the ways that they need and that sometimes that looks wildly different for individuals or groups, that everyone does ultimately perform better. And there's, there's great evidence to support this in educational research.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe?
With DEI, I feel like my personal journey brings that diversity. I want to bring that to the Board of Ed. Being a graduate of HBCU in terms of my graduate studies with a lot of great minds of diversity, also in terms of being, again, the second most diverse institution in all of the country at my community college. Also, inclusion, I think, is very important and I agree with that with DEI in terms of all students, no matter their gender, race, or cultural, or orientation, or economic background, should have equal access and opportunity to an education and its resources without exception. That's great. Equity, that's where we get a little tripped up sometimes. When it's done for its intended purpose, it serves an important function for our schools. Students who suffer, for example, ADHD, have a 504 plan, can be accommodated with a seat in the front of the classroom. Student has dyslexia, given extra time to complete readings, it's equitable treatment and that's fine. I'm talking about, again, equity in terms of uplifting students, doesn't divide them. Every student deserves equal access to an education and its resources. Every graduate deserves a fair and equal shot for a position in the workforce, but it's not wise to mentally hamstring, and yes, I've been attacked for saying that, wanting to thinking they cannot achieve without success on their own merits. I fear that, again, it can be damaging, serving as a mental crutch, that those who think it's essential for their success, that they be given something, an opportunity that maybe they don't feel they earned. Equal treatment is all they want. At that HBCU, if you told these people you couldn't succeed on your own merits, I wouldn't want to be in the same room in that discussion. So let's not insult these students necessarily with always assuming equity is the solution. We want equality. Thank you.
Ms. Zimmer?
Thank you. My children, I mentioned at a previous forum, my kiddos go to Cranberry Station and it's one of the most diverse schools in the county and I'm very grateful for that. And I'm proud that they're being exposed to that and will have that worldview. It was very different from the school that I grew up with, so I'm very grateful for that. That being said, I believe all students deserve respect. I don't think we should be isolating student groups for inclusion. I think we should be teaching our students to be kind and respectful to everyone. I believe in true meritocracy and diversity of thought. Schools are established to maintain safe, fair, and inclusive environment for all students and faculty. I believe public schools exist primarily to provide strong academic foundations, to prioritize the basics, reading, writing, math, science, and the arts, and encourage societal values, including civic virtue, hard work, good citizenship, and to respect each other's rights and property. I do not think that our public schools should push divisive theories on race. I support merit-based hiring, promotions, salary, and all other personnel policies irrespective of race. What it comes down to all day long is merit. I believe that we should be working in true meritocracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's a multi-part question regarding those who work for Carroll County Public Schools. How would you assess employee morale? And if it needs to be improved, how would you improve it? And finally, what are your strategies and plans for empowering educators? And this time, I believe, we'll start with Dr. Jaskowski.
Okay, yes. So I think that, again, it starts with listening to our educators, asking them what would be the most helpful. And that includes having really strong partnerships with our collective bargaining units. But in addition to that, I think that it is being very thoughtful about what the workday looks like and all of these additional burdens that have been kind of placed on educators in various roles, whether that's paperwork, whether that's all these new initiatives or types of curriculum or materials or technologies. It's a lot to handle. And in addition to that, they are tasked with maintaining order in a classroom when there's a lot of disruption and mental health concerns. So I think in general, just listening and supporting as much as we can. I think that we need to be very clear how much we value our educators so that they feel like they want to come to work, that they want to stay here, and that, you know, their efforts are really something that we appreciate. You know, I think there's a lot of ways to do this. It includes, of course, having fair living wages, giving appropriate benefits packages, incentives for leadership and development, professional development. And then, again, you know, working with administrators to make sure that educators feel like they are supported also just within their school as far as the decisions they're making in the classroom, that they're really backed up and reinforced and have someone standing behind them with any decisions that they're making.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe?
I assess employee morale being kind of low and that's just because, not every school, but as I've visited different teachers and I've door-knocked throughout the county and met many educators, too many of them feel like they're not being, morale's low because they're getting more and more tasks, more objectives that they're given, and then they have to change their lesson planning and it uproots things year after year. And so that's hard for them. We need supportive policies to empower these educators. I support current board policies that fairly compensate staff for their participation in extracurricular activities. And again, that could be a burden, but let's compensate them for, because these teachers work hard and they work beyond what they're told they need to do. They bring it home. They bring it on their weekends. They bring it on vacation. So, you know, let's try to compensate that. On the board, I would ensure that bargain, we bargain in good faith with all employer groups to ensure compensation is provided with any additional expectations and responsibilities that are assigned. Again, as I said, I support very manageable classroom sizes. I think that helps to empower them. I think that as an educator, I've experienced, again, just by adding a few extra students to a class, what that can do in terms of relesson plans, more grading, and so forth. There's more, but I'm out of time.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
I too do believe that teacher morale is low, but I do not think that's a Carroll County problem. I don't even necessarily think that's a state of Maryland problem. I think that's a national problem that teachers are struggling right now. I think a big piece of that has to do with behaviors within the classroom and the fact that teachers feel as if they cannot effectively teach because we have disruptive students that continue to be able to disrupt time after time. There's no discipline and it just makes for a very difficult classroom environment. I have had, I've been touring the county over the last two years, talking to lots of principals and teachers and trying to understand what the problem is. One thing that I hear over and over again is that when there is a student that is overly disruptive, the amount of time it takes to get the student into a different learning environment takes way too long. By the time that it's done, the school year is almost over and I understand that we have to be pursuing every possible intervention, but I'm hearing from teachers at lots of different schools that it's taking too long. I think that how to remedy it, I think that we're lacking in some of the schools with PTAs. I heard the middle schools, East and West Middle, either East or West, I'm sorry, I can't remember which, is having difficulty getting a PTA going. PTAs are able to sort of provide those extras, those meals, those snacks, those things that help teachers and take a little bit of the burden off. So I think that's a real missed opportunity at some schools as well.
Thank you. And Mrs. Dupin?
Yes. Morale among our educators is not great. And it's true that there is a national teacher shortage, that as a profession, being an educator... teacher shortage, that as a profession, being an educator is harder than it's ever been, and it's always been an incredibly difficult job. But again, bringing this lens of working in the nonprofit world where you're driven by a mission, you're driven by service, and to be empowered and to be able to be free, to be creative, and make learning fun, does not happen when teachers are in fear. And a lot of our teachers are actually in fear right now, and I think it is worse in Carroll County. Saying that books have been banned is not the same thing as calling somebody specifically a book banner, but what's been happening with that is these are attacks on the freedom to read, the freedom to learn, the freedom to teach. Some criticisms that misconstrue what DEI stands for makes teachers afraid to teach real history. It makes them afraid to talk about the good and the bad, and to encourage the critical thinking about those things. There's a lot of tentativeness and worry and concern. So having employers that support those educators is one thing. There's also all of these behavioral issues, and there isn't always the support of parents, and sometimes even administrators, on how a teacher manages, or teacher manages their own classroom. They also don't have enough supports, enough specialists, reading specialists, math specialists. There are not enough counselors, those other core competencies that help them to address all of the diverse needs. And then there's also a lot of professional development pushed on them that's not necessarily meaningful. They need real meaningful professional development as well.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Do parents have the right to know about their teacher's qualifications? And if a teacher does not have a teaching certificate, should parents be made aware of that? And this time, we'll start with Dr. Malvoe.
So I think that, again, it's important that you have open, transparent discussion between teachers and parents. I'm a big believer in terms of making sure that there's meetings with the teachers. And teacher qualifications, sure, we want our teachers to be certified. Carroll County has done a rather good job in terms of making sure that certification occurs, but we have a new policy where we can hire, and it would be three years before that teacher is contingent upon remaining three years to be certified. So I think we need to make sure that we continue to have certified teachers, and then we don't have to question their qualifications. Do, it's an interesting question, do, do parents need to know about those qualifications? I mean, I just think maybe when they have their meetings together, parent-teacher conferences, they can discuss that and be open with that. I think the bigger question is making sure that the students are receiving what they need, and that, you know, they're getting the best education possible, and that their needs are met. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
I think the best way to battle this would be to be hiring teachers who are certified, who have the teacher's certificate. You know, I have said publicly that I do not think that there is ever an instance where something should be kept from parents. And this is actually, I believe, an exception. I believe that a teacher's resume, job history, schooling, what type of certifications that they have, I do believe that that teacher deserves privacy. They were obviously hired by Carroll County Public Schools, and I have faith that Carroll County Public Schools is hiring the best possible candidates. And in that case, because that is such an HR issue, I absolutely do not think that that information needs to be shared with parents. So that is an exception when I say that I believe everything should be shared with parents. I do not think that should be shared. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupin?
Yeah, it's a really good question. So unfortunately, we talked about the teacher shortage nationally. And in Maryland in particular, we have to bring more teachers in from out of state and are not able to fill positions. So we're trying a lot of like homegrown tactics and, and one of the blueprint mandates to professionalize the position, to add more compensation, to bring in the 60-40 split, which allows for the planning time that's needed to be ready to deliver effective instruction. But if you literally cannot hire enough teachers, then you had to hire some with provisional certifications, or overrely on substitutes, which was also a thing that was happening a lot as well in Carroll County with the shortages. I agree that there are a lot of pitfalls, saying, hey, parents, here are the qualifications of your teacher, and sort of inviting negative scrutiny and picking apart. I'm not sure that's wise. I think a lot of teachers generally are open. They share with parents. They say, hey, here's how to get to know me. And they share their background on their own, and I think that that's, that's great and that's smart. I would want to make sure that the school system, when you do have professional teachers with provisional certifications, that there is that development plan, that there's, that there's a plan in place to get that covered. I know a lot of our education support professionals are, ought to be able to, they have the ability to do more than they do, and they're awfully good at what they do. And in many of those cases, I certainly wouldn't want them coming under attack for not necessarily measuring up.
Thank you. And Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes, I agree with what Ms. Zimmer was talking about when she said that we should be able to trust that the county, that the school system, when they are hiring non-certificated folks, that they have been hired based on other qualifications or demonstrating competence in other ways. I fear, though, that at times, and particularly in the case of hard-to-fill positions, that there is pressure to say things like Carroll County is doing a great job at filling all of our openings, instead of making sure that we are truly filling those spots with folks that should be there. We know from the data that many of the non-certificated teachers, as well as our short and long-term subs, are the ones that are experiencing the most classroom challenges. And that's due to their lack of experience and training, and also support at the school and system level. So, you know, I think it comes down to the fact that we can't hire and fully staff with fully certificated candidates if we don't make living and working here in Carroll County and in Carroll County Public Schools attractive to educators and support staff. So I agree that offering opportunities for professional development within, growing our own from our local institutions of education, and having those career ladders in place so that people can be getting that training and certification on an appropriate timeline and with the appropriate supports would be one way to combat that.
Thank you. Okay, next up. The faith in all public institutions seems to have eroded over the past decade, and that includes public education. What will you do to address this? And we'll start with Ms. Zimmer.
So I actually have a lot of faith in our current Board of Education. I think they've done a really good job in the last four years. We were the first school to open after the pandemic. We were the first system to get sports back up and going. We were the first school system to get our students unmasked, which I personally was extremely grateful for. We consistently rank at the top of the state as far as our testing is concerned. I think we have outstanding teachers. I think that the board has done a really good job, and I don't think that everyone has lost, lost faith in them. I think that they have stood up to the state of Maryland as there has been this erosion of local autonomy. And I plan to champion those, I plan to champion that as well. Carroll County is different. We're different than a lot of the other counties in the state, and I think that is what makes us special. And I'm going to champion that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dupin?
So that, yeah, I think the erosion of faith in public institutions is definitely problematic and systemic at a nationwide level. It's here in Maryland, it's here in Carroll County. And you don't, you don't fix that with any one board or anything else, but I think one of the ways that you bring that faith back is, for example, the Carroll County Public School System is an offshoot of the Maryland State Department of Education. We are subject to state laws and those other mandates, and we exist within that context. Local control is important, and I think that there's a lot of opportunity in Carroll County locally to maximize what we do well. And a lot of it is something that I'm, I'm a champion of, which is experiential education, which are things like our outdoor school and career in tech, and the other ways to make learning hands-on and enjoyable and fun. But I think the way to address this eroded faith in public institutions is for them not to be pitted against each other, local control versus the state. We have to work with the state to make the changes that we want. We have to earn respect and trust to be able to have more autonomy. It's the same, unfortunately, with a child, where you're, you're in a part of a hierarchy. Pitting yourself against the decision-makers is not going to put you in a, in a good position to do better. So I am a huge champion of public education, an unapologetic supporter of the notion of, and, and I think public education institutions and other public institutions are under attack. I think some of it isn't organized and intentional, and it's what's causing a lot of the erosion of morale and divisiveness in the community.
Thank you. Dr. Jaskowski?
I think that there's absolutely been an erosion of trust in our public schools, both nationwide and locally. And I think that not acknowledging this is frankly a bit out of touch. I think that a lot of this comes from some, it's, it's a shame, you know, it's, it's coming from this kind of politically motivated disinformation campaigns, you know. And so I want to set the record straight on a few things that I think are causing some of this harm. You know, schools are not pushing divisive theories on race. They're just not. There are no sexually explicit books in our elementary schools, and there never were. There is not indoctrination happening in the public school system. Our educators are struggling to stay afloat with classroom behaviors and paperwork and everything else that we've discussed tonight. So, you know, I think some candidates are distracted by these culture wars. I'm really focused on ensuring that students graduate with the skills they need to succeed. And I think that building strong relationships with state leaders, as Mrs. Dupin was talking about, puts me in a better position to ensure that Carroll County gets its fair share of resources, and that we do have a seat at the table so that our voices are heard when we're asking for flexibility and local control. I think fighting the state at every turn might score political points in the short term, but it doesn't help our schools, and it frankly doesn't help our pocketbooks either. So I'm here to focus on the students and bringing real results and not the politics.
Faith in our public schools. Well, there are a number of ways we can go with this. I'll say that I think there's some positives in terms of faith in our public schools in Carroll County. Not saying that we don't have our concerns and so forth, but there are a lot of things we do well. And thanks to our board, currently, we do those things well. We spend less per student, yet we have the top test scores with the MCAPs, and that's something to feel good about and proud of. Yeah, we have less issues with teacher and staff vacancies to fill than other places. Just eight vacancies two years ago. This time around for our school year, four vacancies to fill. And that's because our current board added 123 new positions with $11 million from the new print funding, the blueprint funding, which was mentioned before, has helped. Our neighboring counties have hundreds of vacancies. We have the best benefits, most highly engaged parents, and a great system that supports our educators. So I see a lot of pluses in terms of faith being strong. And we have a fraction of the classroom management issues that other counties have. And I just want to make sure that we don't become a rubber stamp in terms of whatever the state says, we do. We need to have local control. We have to treat Carroll County for its needs, and, and we need to look at that and continue to do so.
Thank you. We have got one last question, and it might be the most important one for others to try and make up. What would you identify as a significant difference between you and the other candidates? Keep your last pitch to the board. So let's start with...
Thank you very much. So I think I have a few significant differences. Number one, as I said, I have a 10-year-plus history of advocating for our schools. I came to that as a parent with some issues that I became aware of, but I stuck with it, again, because of my commitment to public education, my commitment to my community. And, and I've stuck with it, and I have that, that demonstrated background. So that's, that's one thing that sets me apart. I do think the endorsement of our educators matters. They are the ones that know the most what they need, and I have that, and I embrace it, and I am humbled by it. And I, I think it's really important to keep that in mind and to look at that because I, I cannot overstate how much our educators need more support, not just in terms of their compensation packages, but in terms of the leaders who oversee the school system. Some other things, I think, again, you know, I'm a parent that is parented at every level. I do have that broad depth and, the depth and the range and knowledge about, about the school system. I think that I have the skills to come together and try to collaboratively problem solve, because I think that our, our board is in danger of being a monolith without more diversity of viewpoints. That's, that's not how we can be more robust. I think our school system is great, but I actually think it can be a lot better.
Thank you. Dr. Jaskowski?
Yes. So in addition to having the support and endorsement of the majority of educators and support staff in the county, you know, I think that, again, faith in our schools really comes down to having faith in our leaders. And I hope, from, you know, my background and expertise, but also what I've shared tonight, that people know that they can have faith in me as an effective leader. I agree that having a diversity of thought and opinions in leadership roles is extremely important. It's really not necessary to have leadership by committee if everyone thinks the same thing. It's also not how we have new ideas and creativity and an openness to learning. Learning is about trying to try on new perspectives and maybe change your opinions on things. It doesn't mean holding fast to one particular viewpoint at all times. I think also the fact that I'm an occupational therapist, so I have this really rich and deep understanding of the complexities of navigating the special education system and process with families and supporting students from a wide, with a wide range of abilities, makes me unique as a potential board member. I think that, you know, I do tend to take this kind of whole-child approach, so thinking about learning needs as well as how to develop those executive function skills, how to maintain self-regulation in the classroom, and just collaborating and advocating for and with families to make sure that they get what they need with the school system.
Thank you. Dr. Malvoe?
I feel that with Ms. Zimmer, there's definitely some commonalities in terms of our values, our goals, our pillars. I do think there's separation or difference for sure with the slate, which I'd like to outline a couple of them. As I said before, I think the board cannot serve as a mere rubber stamp for poor policies in Annapolis, in the state. And the rights of Carroll County citizens on a local level need to be advocated and defended. I am proud that we are the only county in Maryland with an opt-out from the state mandated, mandated family life curriculum. If a parent does not feel that their child's prepared for that family life curriculum, they shouldn't be forced to join it. They can choose the curriculum of Carroll County or opt-out altogether. And 50% of families chose to opt-out. That's a good number from last year. Again, in contrast, I'll always put Carroll County students and staff and their parents first. Also, in terms of differences, I feel like it was mentioned out of touch, the 60 books that were considered in terms of removing from the shelves, it is sexually graphic. When you have descriptions of rape scenes, and you have descriptions of images of kids giving each other oral sex, how can that not be sexually graphic? I think that's out of touch not to assume that that exists. It certainly does. And so we get a right to do that and to look at those books. There's nothing wrong with that. It's common sense, as I said. Gosh, and I'm out of time.
Thank you. And Ms. Zimmer?
I think a major differentiator is that I am the only candidate that is from here, so that I live here. My small business is here. I own a home here. I am truly immersed in this community. As Dr. Malvoe mentioned, we do see a lot of things the same way. And we, I think you will find that each, each set of us see things very differently. I don't think it's misinformation that the new Maryland health framework is extremely inappropriate for the grades that it is being taught to. I don't think that's misinformation. I don't think it's misinformation that there are biological boys in the girls' bathrooms and locker rooms. That is not misinformation. It's not misinformation that a biological boy can stay in the camp at outdoor school if he identifies as a girl. That is not misinformation. And I, I think it's, I don't think it's fair... That is not misinformation, and I think it's, I don't think it's fair to ask parents to be putting their students in that situation. Unfortunately, this is the Biden and Harris administrations Title IX, and while we're living under this administration, this is the harsh reality of that. Dr. Malvo and I do see it very differently than the slate for student success. So I think 80%, we probably, the four of us, agree on. We want the absolute best for all these students, but that last 20% is really important, and we do see things very differently.
So that'll do it for the Q and A tonight. We have time for closing statements now. Remember, there'll be two minutes each in length, and we will begin with Dr. Jaskowski.
Okay, well, thank you. Before I say my closing statement, I wanted to correct one thing. I think Mr. Malvo's numbers on the opt-out are a bit incorrect as a member of the committee that reviews those numbers. It's also state law that every district has to have an opt-out option. So Carroll does have an additional opt-out option with the Carroll curriculum, but every single district in our state does have an opt-out option, and I support that, and I'm on record saying that. But I would like to start by thanking the Liberty High School PTSO and the Community Media Center for once again having an opportunity to speak to the community, whether in person or through streaming, and to all of you for your time tonight. I want to reiterate that while this race may be perceived as a political battle, it's more important to keep in mind how the outcome of the election will contribute to the likelihood of our children receiving the education that they deserve. My record has always been focused on one thing, student success. I believe in maintaining high expectations while ensuring that every child has the support they need to achieve, whether that means more equitable access to resources, mental health supports, or special education services. Our opponents may emphasize parental rights, but I believe true parental engagement is about partnership, working with families to build strong school environments where parents feel empowered to participate in their child's learning by volunteering, by communicating with educators and administrators, by building capacity and resilience, and expanding on classroom lessons in the context of their own family's values. As parents, our job is not to make others comfortable with how we raise our children. It's to ensure our kids grow up in a family and a school environment where they're comfortable being who they truly are. I will fight to ensure that our schools reflect this. Every child from every walk of life should have access to an exceptional public education without fear of exclusion, censorship, or discrimination. And if elected, I will continue advocating for student-centered policies and support for every educator and family. I hope I've earned your vote tonight, and that you can be confident knowing I will represent you well when I serve on the Board of Education.
Thank you. Dr. Malvo?
So as an educator, an administrator, and the father of a Carroll County public school student, if it hasn't been clear tonight, I want to share with you my plan for Carroll County schools. First, we must make certain that our schools are absolutely safe, secure, and drug-free. There's no compromises with me in ensuring the safety of Carroll County students, teachers, and support personnel. Second, we must make certain that parents are involved in the education of their children from start to finish, and that parents have the absolute right to know exactly what their children are being taught. Third, we must focus on the basics of a good education for every child. This means we provide every child a strong foundation in mathematics, science, language arts, and American history. Fourth, we must have discipline in our classrooms. This means eliminating distractions such as cell phones, having less tolerance for bad behavior, and ending any type of bullying in our school system. Fifth, we must keep social views, political views, and extreme policies out of our school system. Our goal is to provide our children with strong, solid education without distraction. Six, we must always remember that the money that funds our schools comes from taxpayers. We must be fiscally responsible with our monies and obtain maximum value for every dollar that we spend. You've heard my views, and I plan on just doing the best I can in terms of facing these critical issues for our schools. For additional information on myself, please visit my website, gregmalvo.org. Look at what I stand for, look at my endorsements, look at the full picture, and I hope I earn your vote. I will work hard, I will do my best on your behalf. I care for all of our children, I care for our teachers, I care for the success of Carroll County, and I ask for your vote, and I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zimmer?
Thank you again, Liberty High School PTSO and the Carroll County Media Center. Thank you again, Bob, you've been great. As I mentioned a number of times this evening, that I live here, I work here, I feel as if I'm the ultimate stakeholder. As a parent and professional, I will ensure that both parents and educators' voices are heard. Parents deserve to be respected and included, and teachers need and deserve to be supportive and to feel safe in their classrooms. We need to allow teachers to focus on teaching reading, writing, math, science, and the arts, while respecting parents' individual right to teach political, social, and religious values at home.
I ardently support Carroll County's traditional academic and community values as a staple for Carroll's continued educational excellence. Keeping Carroll County amongst the best places in the nation to start a family, to prepare for, and ultimately to pursue a career are my top priorities. I will always stand up for Carroll County. If my message resonates with you, I hope that you will vote Kristen Zimmer for Carroll County Board of Education. My name will be very last on the ballot, but I will always put Carroll County Public Schools first. Thank you.
Thank you. And you got to go first, and now you get the last word. Mrs. Dupin?
Thank you again to all involved with making this forum available to the people of Carroll County, including my fellow candidates, and to all in attendance or watching now or later. The focus of the board needs to return to academics. We must ensure that our schools remain excellent and get even better. This matters not only to CCPS families, but to people like me who don't currently have kids in the system. We hear a lot while campaigning, some say, I don't really ever pay attention to Board of Ed, and that's common, but also many who say, well, I don't have kids in the system. And it usually doesn't take much convincing to remind them that they may have other personal stakes in terms of other family, friends, neighbors, coworkers, but it also matters to them, because it is shown through the evidence that strong schools relate to safer, friendlier, more prosperous communities. This matters to everybody, and it's really important. We must cultivate a community where every voice is heard and valued. We need to come together on common ground around our common values. We are not all the same, and that's a good thing. And some of us have been here forever, and some of us have been here 20 years, and some of us have been here 10 years, and some of us have been here two years. But we all chose this as our home, we choose this every day to be our home, we love our community, and we want to make sure that everybody here feels a part of that community, especially at our schools. We should elect people who genuinely believe in the promise of public education, who center decisions around putting students first, who will partner with all parents and guardians, who deeply admire educators, and who can contribute to a positive climate so that our kids can thrive. I strive to model those traits, will work incredibly hard on behalf of every family, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you. And that concludes our forum. I really want to thank all the candidates today. And throughout the campaign, everybody has come out to a lot of these forums, and nobody bailed on them, everybody came out and answered a lot of questions. So I think you gave the voters a lot to think about, and hopefully a lot of good information. So thanks to all four of you for what you've done all these last few months, and thanks to everybody who came out tonight to Liberty High School and is watching at home. Also want to thank our host, Michelle Rogers, our timer, Heather Mattern. We want to thank Scott Walltower, and everyone else who helped to make this possible. This forum will be available for on-demand viewing at carolmediacenter.org, as well as on Facebook and YouTube, and it will repeat regularly on cable channel 1072 until the election. Before we go, I'd just like to encourage everyone to learn about all the candidates by visiting the Voters Guide on the CMC's website, and we strongly encourage everyone who is eligible to vote, whether it's by mail, during early voting, or by coming out to the polls on Election Day, November 5. So for the Community Media Center and for the Liberty High School PTSO, thank you very much, and good night.